We're calling the selectmen's meeting to order this evening. Public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We have a 7:30 meeting with FinCom regarding fiscal year '19 budget. So we'll crank through things between now and then. Minutes, we have October 25th, October 28th. Both, that's a joint with FinCom. I looked at that, that was fine. Did you have any?
Yes.
Yep.
No.
Okay.
I didn't have any problems with the...
And then the open session for the 28th, I think looked okay too.
Yep.
To me. So we're ready to vote on those?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have motor vehicle fiscal year '17 refund $401.36. It goes to one, two, three, four individuals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have an appointment, Lori Farabee, to the Berlin Annual Town Report Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No, it should be good.
All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chief, are you here for a specific?
Not sure.
Oh, okay. Sure they just thought?
There was nobody here, so...
Cable's out today or something? Yeah, yeah. Okay. No, I just wanted, because I didn't want you to just hang out.
You're on the budget process.
Okay, great.
Ashburnham actually has no power too in some areas, don't they? Or they did.
My house is okay.
Yeah, figures.
Appointment of Lucy Ayers to the Berlin Annual Town Report Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
They're fully staffed now.
All right. I was wondering if there was going to be a good acronym for that one. It started nicely with "bat," but then it kind of jumbles into consonants after that, so... And the Berlin Information Technology Committee has got to be the BIT committee, you know? There's an acronym, it works. Had appointment of Garth Coleman to the Berlin Information Technology Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions? I think it's great.
Yeah.
All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have, next, the installment number six on the Ann Nellie contract. This is to be paid from the $217,800 that we have left from the Mass Cultural Grant account. The amount that we're paying out of it today is $170,000. Motion to approve.
So moot.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is, the next one is payment of $1 for the lease of lot number seven on River Bridge North, which is the lot that's used for the community garden. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Built to select those expenses, do we have enough tonight? All right. Motion, motion made and seconded. No comments or questions. We'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, there you go. The, the next is execution of the contract about, in the receipt of our Mass Cultural Council local grant, which is in the amount of $4,400. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Just put a couple of these things together so they stay together. Okay. The next item is a letter of support for Representative Norton's floor amendment to Bill 3961 as re-merged and, as regarding the merged and appointed treasurer and collector legislation. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
This is, I'm just signing off as the locality, what he's carrying forth on the legislature floor, so we can take that step.
Yes. Great, great.
All right. If there are no further comments or questions, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye. Just one spot, right?
Yep. Okay. The next thing's the budget letter, but we're getting close to 7:30, and we might as well talk about that as part of the next topic, okay?
Okay.
We should have a date by Wednesday on the elevator project, or at least a range of, you know, a range of expected dates, so...
For?
The elevator project, I'm just jumping ahead here.
Yes.
There was one little update that I thought we could fill in the last minute or so with.
Okay.
And I will be attending on Wednesday.
Okay.
So I'm back where I think I'll be in town on Wednesday mornings. It was just a run of three Wednesdays that other things came up.
Yeah.
Are we expecting other members of?
I'm not sure.
I've never heard.
Hmm?
I've never heard.
Dave's away.
Okay. Yeah, no, I know Dave's away, yep.
Are you ready?
We're ready, if we...
I'm on the phone with a FinCom member. Dave's going to try to attend us.
Okay.
So I'm going to...
Is it just you and?
I think it might be just the two of us.
Dave the radio personality?
Dave the radio personality.
All right.
And if I think I put him close to the microphone, if he says anything, you'll be able to pick him up.
All right.
Director, I think, with Dave on the phone.
Hi, Dave.
Hi, Dave.
Hi.
We might need him here with the flooding. We might need him back here with the flooding.
As I say, we're...
Yeah, really. All right, thank you.
Do you want a paper copy too?
Yeah.
Yep, yep. I left him a cover, like, cover page and the other... No, 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 no. The other things I'll reference, you'll get soon enough, and they're not as, they're sort of fun stuff. So fiscal year '19, because, you know, what else is going on?
Yeah, they just keep coming, don't they?
They keep coming. It's like every October, we start another fiscal year. It actually doesn't look all that bad, at least on day one of budget stuff. As it says here, you know, we started the year with a little over $800,000. I know that we're talking about using some of it up at, at special town meeting, but there is some, some benefits there. Meals tax is going up. At some point, there'll be a hotel, they'll bring in hotel tax. As I said, the next sort of sentence in the letter is, you know, how well can we control some of the spendings? You know, health insurance will eat another $100,000 pretty quickly and easily. The fire department is in the process, as we continue this move from, from volunteer to staff, will likely have an increase of, a significant increase somewhere. We had a break last year that, fiscal break, that ACABET drops to 19 students, which is the lowest it's been in a long time, and I expect that if that number returns to the mid twenties again, that 150,000...
Twenty-four.
Yeah. So, I mean, that 150 or 60,000 we saved last year, we knew when it happened it was going to be a very temporary thing, or there'd be a bigger problem, you know, otherwise. And so, although the numbers look fairly decent, as we all know, money gets spent pretty fast.
Yes.
New growth is 200, sorry, 2.5% is 275,000. We only budgeted for fiscal year '18 a whole $100,000 in new growth, and the recap sheet, RECA is not the right one, one of the sheets I look at showed that actually it was 398,000. So we actually ended up with some additional new growth, which will help us. I've not formally heard back from Molly yet about the potential for fiscal year '19, so I just grabbed 100,000 as a number off of my head, but I, I can drive around town too, and we're probably at a nice clip, but like we were last year, and if River Bridge...
100,000 is going to be...
Right. And, and frankly, even if she had a real number here, that's where a whole two months into the year to figure some of this out will be better by the time we get to the budget process. In January, we'll probably put numbers in there. I actually did the math, looking at the recap sheet from what it says our levy limit was for fiscal year '18 versus what we actually taxed last year, and we are now nearing a million dollars in excess levy capacity. And so, although we could in theory spend all of that without having to go to taxpayers asking for more, for, for an override, if we did, they would rightly be upset with all of us, I believe.
Yep.
And one of the things we might look at doing, and we've talked about doing in the past, is we might do even, even a small underwrite of a half million or something, because we wouldn't, I mean, we're, we want permission if we wanted to go over that again anyway. I think it makes great PR for how well this town is generally being run fiscally when towns around us are asking for 2.5 overrides, and we try to do the, the reverse, and I don't think it has too much of a, of a downside. I have not talked to Dennis about it, because I also want to make sure that something like that doesn't potentially hurt bond ratings.
Yeah, that was one of my thoughts, yep.
Because that's going to have to be stuff. And so I think we're going to spend some time this year exploring it, whether or not we pull it off this year, or we put it onto something for next year, but I think it will get a more serious look this time around than we have in the past. And I think it's going to be one of those finding the right number that is still, doesn't hurt bond rating, still promises taxpayers we can't take money from them without, without an override, or at least that amount of money. When we look at the budget impacts, and the things that are worrying us, or things we always say, you know, the COLA and STEPS, we've got, you guys are going to set soon, if not already?
Yes, and we have to talk to you about that and these figures. But whenever these figures were June...
Yep.
And the, when we looked at this, she...
Yep.
She, she went through a half percent of COLA.
Right.
At this point, equals $12,000.
Oh, wow.
Yep.
Okay.
And that caused me to look at the impact of the STEPS.
Yep.
And the way that we calculated that was to, you know, take one step and divide it by the one immediately to its left, and we did that, you know, in four or five spots.
Yep.
And the step is actually equal to a 2.2%, 2.2, 2.3 because of...
Yep.
So, if a half a percent COLA...
Right.
Is 12,000, then the step, which is 2.2, 2.3, we multiply the 12 by 4.5. And, you know, because again, you know, some people are topped out and all of that. So that means that that's 55,000.
Okay. I would not debate that heavily. I, I said at FinCom that we have not calculated this in several years. I've taken the previous years and upped them a little bit every year, but...
We did the same thing, but it was like, well, maybe we ought to really go back to the, so anyway.
Were you, where they originated? Because I have been wondering where they actually, who originally calculated those numbers?
I, I know Scott Schultz had spent a lot of time on them and, and did it his last year there to quite effort. I think we might have had a lot more people near the top of their steps at that point too, because we've had some turnover, which we've not adjusted for.
Exactly. So, anyway.
Yep.
We now understand, we now understand what, you know, what we're doing here. And, and the impact, as I say, those figures assume a step for everyone, so, you know, 55 would be, I think, a worst case, because obviously we have some people at the top of their step, but it's certainly more than 14,000.
Yep.
Okay?
And so have you set what you believe the percentages are going to be, or is that something that's still to?
Well, we, we met on Saturday here, and we decided to go this, this year for, you know, this, what we have done in the past.
Yep.
Which was to take the Eastern Massachusetts CPI COLA for Eastern Massachusetts, which was 2.7% this year. And to do that, however, we really, we began to think, you know, that we ought to look in this budget cycle as to whether the combination of the step and the COLA is in fact, you know, too rich. We didn't feel, we feel that we should discuss that as part of the ongoing budget and make a change next year if we determine we're going to make a change, so that we can have time to get input, you know, from the departments and, and discuss it. But it was kind of an eye-opener to realize that we had a 2.3 and a 2.7 with the combination of step. It's, and it's not as simple, and we did, you know, I did take a look, because although we have used the year-end September, you know, on the theory that, you know, some quarter is up, some quarter is down, and that's the one that we have dependably, you know, before we begin the budget process, I did look, because it was 2.7 this time, just to see if this was, you know, like, an unusual spike, and everything else was down, in which case I would not have blushed to make some. However, it, it really isn't. If you took the last four and averaged them together, it was 2.5, so it's not, you know, it was not an anomaly.
Right, right.
So, food, gasoline, you know, in that, that year, those were, those were two big, big contributors, so that's where we, that's where we are with that. So we have approved a, we have approved a step chart with that 2.7% COLA incorporated, and we will be distributing that, because they say we just voted on it on Saturday morning.
Yeah. So it's about 100,000 total, maybe 120 or something like that.
Yep, that's probably it, yeah. Yep. But, yep.
I said health insurance will add another 100 on top of that.
I'm sure.
Some changes to health insurance.
Mm-hmm.
Fire and rescue, again, as we transition over, we're expecting another sort of increase there as well.
And I think, again, as we think about insurance...
Yep.
We really ought to think about the fact that we're going to be giving people a very generous raise this year, and if we're going to make an adjustment in terms of plans, deductibles, and et cetera, it's probably a good year...
Yeah.
...to think about that. I mean, we have had latent concerns about the Cadillac tax, which, you know...
Who knows?
If you know what's happening with healthcare, then you're ahead of most of what's happening in Washington, so, you know, we need to, we need to watch that. My own guess is the Cadillac tax won't be, you know, applied, but who knows?
Right, right.
All right.
Right, and it's a personnel committee that helps work it out. Or did you have a health insurance team that's?
There's an insurance committee.
Right.
Yeah.
Insurance advisory committee.
Insurance advisory committee, but I think, you know, we need to, we need to think about...
I'm not sure that they've even met, though.
Yeah, well, it's something...
But it's a good point, that they're forgiving.
...process that we want to do, because we are, we're sticking to a policy that's frankly expensive and generous, but I would emphasize that we had years in which there was a zero COLA, and people stuck by us with that. So we're, you know, I mean, we, we stuck by it, but, you know, despite the same token, sticking by that with the employees, I think, puts us in a position to say to guys, you know, in terms of, you know, in terms of, of looking at insurance and looking at adjustment of deductibles, et cetera, you know, you're doing well this year, and it might be a good time.
Yeah, it's going to be...
And then, of course, what you do well with compounds too, so it's not like, you know, it's not like this goes away after, it's not like a bonus, you know?
Right, well, and it's going to be easier to do something like that on a year you're actually, you're right, giving a potentially a step and a raise...
That is very generous.
...than it is on a year that you're not giving any raises or cap steps.
Right, exactly. So I think we need to pay some attention to that.
We already talked about ACABET, you know, having a significant increase that we expected.
I'm meeting with them on the 14th, myself, to just speak to Superintendent Chris Loto.
Before we do that, because I just want to stick with the list that...
Yep.
Chief, you and I had discussed the fact that this year, I think we'd like to see a more differentiated budget, you know, we only have, and we've talked about that before. Right now, we only have a couple of subdivisions. And I think, you know, we had done that in the first year, you heard, because nobody knew what that was going to happen in terms, and we did it, you know, in the second year without it being too terribly articulated, because again, it was a developing situation. I think at this point, we'd like to revert to, you know, an itemized budget that roughly follows what we would see in the police or something like that. I mean, this is news, we've talked about this, so, again, just wanted to sort of hit some of the points as you're going through. Okay, schools?
Against schools, I think, Tohonto, you know, again, our, our swing of our population being a smaller amount or a larger amount, I think we, I think this will be a year that it starts swinging back the other direction as well, that as we start looking at fifth grade classes and sixth and fourth grade classes, ours are larger, as you look at graduating classes, and so we should start getting ready for that. I also expect that, you know, they have a new superintendent, and so how much is known or unknown, I'm hoping Bob is still around as their finance person, so there's at least some stability there.
Yes, he is.
But with, with change always comes new, different priorities and, and other stuff. I don't know how much the new superintendent will have a chance to put a big stamp on the budget process by the time we get to January, which is only a couple of months out, but it's something just to be aware of. Our favorite retirement funding is next, you know, that's another one that goes up by more than inflation. It's been growing up by about 10 or 12%. At some point, I'd love to figure out where I find enough time and energy to really dig into sort of where that increase is coming from. Is it coming from because we're paying people more, we're hiring more staff, we're hiring younger staff? Retirees are, are pulling on their retirement funds longer. How much is their management fees on it? I know that they have some limitations on what they can invest in, and mostly what they're required to invest in is things that have not done well lately in the market, so just because our old retirement funds are doing well, doesn't always translate into theirs doing well as well.
I mean, you don't really have a choice on this one, right?
We, we don't. It still, it still feels bad, but...
You even contribute to it, and you don't have a choice.
I know. Actually, ours is different, isn't it? There's something different.
And so, yeah, you're in it as well, I believe, yeah. And, and so it's one of those that...
After several years of being selectmen, I can take you guys all out to lunch.
Right, right, right.
When I retire, and that'll be it.
I thought when you were telling, you might be able to get a cup...
Not in place expensive, even.
Get your weekly cup of coffee at Lowe's, I think is what you get on a retirement fund.
I don't think it would even endow that. I think it's like $125 after 10, you know, 15 years.
Sometimes when people talk to me about why, you know, they, they don't think that the malls have added a lot to the town, and, and I point out that some of these things like health insurance, it's gone up 10% every year, and, and the retirement that goes up 10% every year, and towns around us, they have to do 2.5 overrides to just cover those basic costs, never mind being able to invest more in schools and elevators and modernizing, you know, fire departments, other stuff, that we have done all of those sort of things in our town and have a million dollars worth of levy capacity. And if it wasn't for some of those malls, we wouldn't be having those. And yes, if we didn't have the malls, our fire department could be smaller, our police department would be smaller, but in the end of the day, I think we're, I still think we are better off fiscally because of those decisions even before I got here.
No, and I also think that the work that we've done improving the facilities and infrastructure is probably one of the best hedges that we can have...
Right.
...against a changing economic environment. I mean, if the mall, you know, if the mall goes under, then you have avoided, you, you don't have that expense, because you've made that expense. And, you know, we, you know, when, when we have completed this cycle, I think, you know, people are going to be good for a generation or two before you have to make major, you know, infrastructures and facilities investments. And that's, that's huge.
Yeah. Yes, I think we've, we've done fairly well. And then I have some housekeeping stuff right at the bottom. We have a lot of old warrant articles. I have, what, two pages from June of warrant articles that are open and unspent. June, every year, asks departments if it's okay to close them, and in some respects, if you say nothing or don't volunteer, that it's closable, it stays open. And I think we're going to just ask some departments a little heavier when we do our, our reviews of which one of these can be closed. I think there's a, there's a couple of open warrant articles, I think, are being used, not in the way when they were originally voted on, I think they're being used for good things. And so I think it's a better time to go after this, when you think, so the library is doing planning, which is great, but they're using the planning grant we gave them for the last time around, they were supposed to do some planning. The elevator project, you know, we gave some money for painting 1870 Town Hall and all the stuff that was done, and I just, I'm not, I've never been a big fan of warrant articles staying open more than a year or two. Either you need it the year you've asked the taxpayers for it, or you didn't, and if you didn't need it, there were other things that we might have postponed or put off and told a department, please don't come in this year, because we're full, and then you don't use it, I don't think is a, is a good thing.
Yeah.
I think it depends.
I don't think it forces, I don't want to force all these to close, there could be good reasons for some of them to stay open, but I think we should ask the question a little tougher.
I think that's fair. You know, I think some of those, particularly something like the 1870 Town Hall and the library, which you mentioned, is people knew that there was a continuation of those, you know, projects and that work that was coming down the pike in the foreseeable future, that I don't think, I don't think those things would have stuck around if the elevator project, you know, weren't, you know...
Right, right. Elevators never stopped existing from the start. Again, I like the way they approached it with is, you know, we did a little bit of money for some design and some planning, you know, we gave more, it went along, instead of giving them a million dollars upfront and then never having sort of a recheck-in with the voters as they discovered more things, so I...
Yeah.
And so we expect to ask a little bit more. I think even if we closed every single one of them, we're, I mean, the, the total right now is almost a million dollars, but that's because we gave a lot in the last year, like, oh, to elevators and things like that, that they're in the list that would still be there. I, I don't think...
And those would probably be spent.
And those will probably be spent, right. And so I think even if we closed all, we're aggressively in closing, I don't think we're talking maybe even 100,000. I mean, I, we're not talking, again, this is not going to suddenly, you know, pay for I mean, I, we're not talking, again, this is not going to suddenly, you know, pay for a thousand things.
Either way, it makes sense to have a.
Yeah, it does, and I also believe that the fewer open funds, the fewer open accounts, the fewer accounts that June has to track and fewer that get audited, and that just keeps some of those file cabinets from filling up as fast as they're filling up.
Mm-hmm.
We're kind of hoping, again, to put a little bit more money in stabilization this year. We, we put a nice down payment last year. I think we're reaching out to Dennis to get a better sense of sort of what percentage we should be looking at, because as our budget grows, we want to make sure stabilization stays pretty even with that. I think we're not far from whatever a good number should be, but I think throwing a little bit more into it again in a year where we underbudgeted new growth by almost $300,000, taking some of that and putting it into stabilization is probably a good thing to do. Because of our last meeting, I've added a new point also on building expenses. We, we do, we should be taking care of our buildings. I think Keith has been doing an increasingly better job at sort of doing some preventative maintenance stuff, and I think he falls in that, as I do IT stuff, where I tend to find a weakness and say, hey, we should look into this before it bites us. It tends to bite us after you've identified it and before you've been able to put something into place.
Right.
He's been trying to do better with some preventative maintenance stuff, so we get better, we get more longevity out of the big pieces of equipment we've, we've invested in. And before, he's managed to get the plan that he's put into place, some of them have bitten us. That's why we'll be spending some money at special town meeting. But we might think of another sort of increase, that line item in the coming year's budget just to maybe prevent future needs for special town meetings. I don't have a number in mind, I don't think Keith even has a number in mind, but we should be accounted when we're thinking that we're gonna be, some increased spending for the next year. That's gonna be probably one of the places we go.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this year we budgeted 20,000 for, you know, if you will, miscellaneous expenses, unanticipated expenses, things where. And in this day and age, that's awfully, you know, that's a modest amount, you know? You just have one or two, you know, significant pieces of equipment can go, and you're gone. I mean, we can go for reserve fund transfers, but as we've talked over the years, when we did it with fire department, you have, you know, you want to do a balance between having money there to spend, that somebody will feel empowered to act proactively and do things, and, and plan to have that. And, you know, and, and what's in the reserve fund, and it's, you know, is truly unanticipated. So, you know, but I think, I think we need to move it a little up from 20,000. I would agree with you.
Yeah, and so we're expecting that to come up. And then the last point on here I started with in some respects is, we'll, we'll be exploring, I think, a little bit more of an underwrite this coming year. And whether or not that's something worthy of doing, even if it's not in this year for the, another year out. Because I, I mean, I think we've done well. I, I shared with FinCom, I think FinCom shared with at least you, at least the, as I was doing my research on trying to find the recap sheet online, I ran across the 2016 article that talked about property taxes across the state. And one of the paragraphs is, you know, because they took into account the increased value of properties, they took into account 2.5 overrides, and said, really, from 2012 to 2016, your property taxes went up from a low in the town of Berlin of $192 to a high of $2,600 in Lexington. But the idea that of the 155 municipalities they looked at for all this stuff, we were at the low end of a raise over a, over a four-year period, and I think we've continued to do quite well at it.
Yeah, the one, and, and you, you hit upon one that's a concern for mine with the underwrite. The other concern that I have with the underwrite is if we had a major store fall out of bed on, you know, at the mall or something like that, I'd, I'd want to be sure that we, you know, we, we didn't get ourselves, you know, too pitched because of that, because as you know, there's a couple of those stores that are. So I, I do think that's another thing that we need, you know, we need to look at in considering, you know, an, an underwrite. Because I think we've, we've exhibited appropriate discipline, and it's a nice gesture, but by the same token, if it, if, if we have a dramatic reduction in, in tax basis, sort of negative growth because of that, I want, I want to also be sure that we're not, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Sealing too close to the mark.
I, I want to make sure, though, that, because even if that happened, would you want to be, would you want to have the resulting tax increase hit the taxpayers without having them to vote on a 2.5 override?
I don't know. I'd have to see what the impact would be, you know?
Yep.
It's very painful to do, you know, 2.5 overrides for stuff that you, that really, as they say, ain't optional.
Right.
Schools and stuff like that, so that's, you know.
Yeah, like, like the health insurance or the, the other side, the retirements, the stuff that is fixed cost, that is controlled by other people, that goes up at the rate it goes up, you know?
Yeah, so.
I've added, there's, there's sort of two quote attachments. Both of these are going to be in the budget packet as well, and so you'll see them again. One is just our meeting calendar that shows that we're basically meeting with department heads in January and February. Then in March, we're doing our votes and, and revotes with the idea that we are done, basically, the last day of March to get our letters and spreadsheets and everything over to the town report committee so that it can be ready in time for all of that, and that can potentially get to taxpayers more than a few days ahead of the meeting.
Yep.
We already have a preliminary meeting scheduled with the schools on July 10th to go over their budgets. Obviously, that's early, early budget stuff. And then we already have our joint meetings on February 27th and 28th, where they're having their public budget hearings that we will attend. And so that's, we, we went back to that tradition last year that we had in my early tenure, where it also saves the schools from having to do more presentations on their budget. They basically do one that goes to both the, the public and the parents as well as us, and we consider the audience and ask questions, and actually hear any questions parents have as well, so that we, we get that all together. And the other piece is a new capital request form that the Capital Request, Capital Planning Committee has put together. I don't know, Dave, do you want to just say anything about the form?
Well, we tried to keep it looking a lot like the old form, but also tried to include DOR recommendations in their guidebook for justification and priorities, and also put it in a, for us, have it in an Excel environment so that some, some department heads could, could entice and, and keep it on record, and it would be helpful for us to have it in digital form. But other, other department heads could use the traditional pencil and paper and still submit the form. And also, we're asking that it be completed by December 1st, so that we have a chance to look at the capital plan in January. So, and we'll be, we'll be doing that in conjunction with the finance committee this year, it being the first year. The other thing, as far as capital planning goes, you know, the issue about the building expenses, some of those warrant articles for small capital equipment, although it's, it's really not maintenance, but some of those, some of those capital improvements are kind of to avoid large maintenance bills. And with a five-year plan, we're hoping to kind of minimize that and at least prepare for it rather than putting out fires, you know, anticipate things that are needed and put it in the capital plan, in some cases, major renovations and so forth. And I guess the last thing, just to go back into the fire and police, Devon's unemployment was a little bit high last year. Maybe Scott, you can comment, but because of the conversion to a regional dispatch, we had some unexpected unemployment claims, and I think, Scott, those are just about, just about done with.
I believe so.
I think, yeah.
Okay.
And so the capital plan, well, they'll be in the new format. I know that as a, as a higher level, I know that FinCom has struggled to figure out a way that, we'd love to figure out a way to do budgeting more electronically and less paper-intensive. You know, the, the, some sort of dream system where a department could fill out their budget online and it actually filled in all the rest of the spreadsheets. It saves me from the trans, the transposition errors that inevitably plague my budget in the early drafts. And, but we've not, they've not figured out a way at this point. There'll probably be spreadsheets people can fill in, but I'll still transfer things over. I plan to do the same process we did last year, as I have a Google Sheet that I've already created that's a bunch of zeros and blank spaces right now. But as we get into the budget process, have that available, both for you folks and department heads and, and potentially, well, and the website where people from the public can click on and see what the budget looks like sort of in real time. And last year, I know that got a lot of people to send me questions ahead of time that I'm hoping saved them from having to ask the questions on the floor of, of town meeting because they could get them answered ahead of time, so.
Is that something that BitCom could help with? Trying to find a, you know, that common methodology of inputting and combining.
Yeah.
I, I would guess so.
Yeah.
I think that would be something to put on the list.
Yep.
I also, I don't know if the functionality is there, but have you looked at Google Forms at all?
I've looked at Google, I use them a chunk at work, I've used them a couple of other places. It is, the tear I have is a combination of, there's sometimes like the supporting documents people send with it that really are paper to start off with. It is that sort of tear that there are sometimes, I mean, that they do their payroll sheets, and it's, you know, this person earns this dollar amount, which is public information, but it just feels odder to lay it out in, in some of those ways. And, and each budget has its own little nuances to it that sometimes makes it a little more difficult. But I, there has to be, there, there could be ways of doing that that make it sort of more accessible and, and just easier to read. I just, because those budget packets are, well, it's easier for us to just, I, I just, the, the volume of trees that get killed and, and that, at the end of the day, we do keep one paper copy of it all as sort of a, the backup. It goes in our drawer over there, but, you know, whether or not every member of FinCom needs to keep a copy of that budget forever in their houses and, and other places, all those poor trees. Luckily, at least, I know most of us recycle it when it's all done, but it'd be a neat way to do it.
And maybe somebody else is already doing something.
Right. We can piggy onto another town that's figured out a way to do it.
Yeah.
Though a lot of the other towns, I mean, when you get to bigger places, their FinComs are, you know, professionals and, and sometimes staff members and other stuff like that, that a lot of times have lost the charm of really the, the volunteer way of, of pulling the stuff together.
I like that. I've never heard that. Putting together of accounts. I like it a lot.
You know, that citizen involvement, you don't get a lot of that.
Yeah, that's great.
So the budget process is early, we'll definitely see more as it goes along. As Dave pointed out, we're looking potentially, and the letter will say this as well, is having the capital requests get to the Capital Planning Committee in December, and the budget gets to us by January, and they will intertwine and get themselves sort of put into a package magically by the first part of April. That magic that happens when we wave ones.
Yeah. Awesome.
The budget will have four less line items this year, all those $1 ones we zeroed out last year. People asked the questions out there, not in the budget anymore, so.
Awesome.
We won't ask, ask questions about $0 line items anymore. We'll maybe ask questions about the bigger ones.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thanks for doing the capital planning, Dave.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, everyone, bye.
Good luck down there. Go Astros, all of that.
All right.
All right.
Bye.
See ya.
Only two more ones of that.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, he's back in January.
Wow. Did you find out whether he's like in one place yet? Because I haven't talked to Judy.
Yeah, he's somewhere outside of Houston. Yeah, just north of Houston, yeah.
Thus, I talked to Judy, he was bouncing from place to place like every four days or something.
Oh, I didn't ask that.
I got the impression that he is now operating out of a place that is just north of Houston, but, you know.
Okay, you guys can have fun with the rest of your meeting now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just wanted to note that on, if November 15th is the date that the FinCom wants to talk about the special town meeting articles, the budget timeline, the special town meeting timeline that I laid out was that you could mail warrants to everyone's home. I think it was the 24th was the last date. So you just want to make sure that we have town council review and language and everything kind of.
Right, because if we do our vote on the 15th.
It's just your vote. You, you're not, he's not suggesting changes.
No, I would suggest changes, but you might be able to put in the letter, FinCom recommends, FinCom doesn't recommend.
Yep, but dollar amounts and funding sources.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll try to get you a funding source, dollar amounts, usually, you folks.
Dollar amounts, we talked about.
Right.
Funding source, I thought we had discussed that, that it was free cash.
I don't think we have much else, much else to use besides free cash, because you can't raise and spend.
Yeah.
And I don't think any of the Highland Common Funds make any sense. The Public Safety Fund, even if we wanted to take out a lot of that, we, we drain pretty much a town meeting until they write the next check, there's nothing in it.
Yeah.
So I, they're all gonna be free cash. And free cash was 847, 864, it was, it was.
For purposes of the articles, we can say, you know, raise appropriately, blah, 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 because then on the town meeting floor, on the motion, we can say for free cash. So I think we just do the standard.
Language.
Language for purposes of this.
Yep.
Council can look at it, but my understanding from last week was that's how we were gonna do it.
Yep, yep, yep. And I'll get a final list of, at least, it might not be the formal language, but.
They're closing it tonight.
Right.
Yes.
Because there were several that were still in question, and there was time for people to submit more things. That's why we didn't do it in our last meeting, because we figured something would change.
No, you should have it.
Close is 10 minutes ago.
Yeah, it's closed.
Okay, so I'll get the final list.
I can send it out tonight.
Yep, yep. As long as I have, probably by the 4:15, they'll be fine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
All right, thanks, Scott.
Motion to close the annual town meeting warrant, the special town meeting warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? And we should probably take a look at that at this point. Do we have those compiled at this point, or?
Everyone has a.
Oh, in our.
Paper, look for this.
Oh, look for this, all right.
Either email, but paper.
May I request a five-minute break while I take a quick look through this?
Sure.
I'm gonna take this. We're back in order, and we'll spend a little time reviewing the special town meeting warrant.
Ask a quick question first. Can we leave headings of some sort on these when we actually send this out? Because it's a lot easier to navigate these when we have a, a name to the article.
I don't see that that's a problem.
Can I kind of give them informal names if you want to clean them up?
We could do that. Should we just jump in?
Yep.
Start at the beginning?
Up on the outstanding, the blue one, the first number one, there is nothing.
No.
Okay, so that's just done.
No. No, I mean, as we go through this, it's in here, but, okay, oh, yes. And we have the, yep, yeah, okay.
Should this be two?
Sorry?
Or is that somewhere else? Should this one be two?
That's what I was gonna say, is we need to split that into two.
Which one?
The municipal building expenses, one goes with 1870 Town Hall and one goes with.
Oh, yes, I did not.
Yep.
Right.
And I think we should use the raise appropriate.
I don't have language on that.
Yeah.
That one was just purely Keith, and then there was gonna be another language, and I didn't know what you wanted.
No, no, I think it should be the same.
Same.
It is gonna go into public buildings.
Just a different article.
But yes, we want to split it into two.
So where would you pick up and add a different descriptor? You'd go, it's gonna be item number 42, line item number 42, public buildings expenses in the fiscal year 18 budget?
Yeah.
And say something a little bit more?
Yeah, hang on, I think, first of all, you want to pick up, even though it may indeed be transferred from available funds, just in case, you want to pick up the, the full raise.
Oh, yes.
And appropriate borrow and/or transfer from available funds.
Okay.
And you want to put it in there.
For both of them.
Yeah, for both of them. Again, we're, it, it's probably 90% sure that it's going to be transferred from available funds, but we don't need to preclude that at this point, okay? And I would think that the first one should be for, for the, for funding, you know, miscellaneous, unanticipated.
I think that one should be first.
Expenses.
Right.
In public buildings, and then, you know, we can speak to what those are, okay?
So miscellaneous, you want?
Yeah, miscellaneous, yeah, repairs and expenses with respect to public buildings, and then you'll duplicate it.
Right.
With respect to expenses attended to the completion of the 1870 Town Hall elevator project will be the second one, fair enough?
Yep.
And curatorial building.
Now, would you put the same thing?
And curatorial building, yep.
The sponsors, wouldn't it be the same for the 1870, would it, or?
Yeah, well, it would be, I mean, it could be selectmen of Town Hall, yes, selectmen.
Vote for both.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, because we, I think we usually do just put selectmen, because it's to be spent by...
Right.
Yeah.
And Keith can go into detail if he needs to.
That's right. That's right. Okay?
So those articles...
It doesn't need to say who has spending authority, this isn't like that, this is just going to be...
That's in the motion.
Okay, okay, okay. Fine, I have it. So the first one's with regard to miscellaneous repairs and expenses with regard to, what, various public buildings?
Yeah.
And then the next one is with regard to expenses attended to completion of the 1870 Town Hall elevator project in historical curatorial building.
Correct. Yep. And the, the sum of money is $45,000 for the Town Hall.
It's 40,000.
And $80,000 for the miscellaneous expenses.
And you want that in the printed warrant, or do you want to hold off until making motions?
No, I think we have to have it.
Put it in the printed?
I think we have to have it in the...
Were those the numbers?
Yeah, those are the numbers.
In the minutes or whatever, must have been.
Okay.
Yeah.
The miscellaneous is 80,000, and the project itself is 45,000.
Correct. Okay. I reviewed the Senate amendment and it taken out that language that we had discussed about, you know, offsetting 50,000 or, you know, recalculating that. And when I spoke to the Senate's about that, and I spoke to planning board as well, I think the general sense was that if the Senate's want a, the 51,000 came from a study that was done with, you know, money that was provided by the developer about the fiscal impact of that project when it was voted. And obviously, it was the profile of that project when it was voted, and the profile What, we indicated to the Senate's and they agreed that if they wish to support a review of that, and support it with, you know, some degree of funding, and they want us to look at that again, and, again, with a, you know, as we said last week, with a clean sheet of paper, you know, figure out what the, from, working from a clean sheet of paper, figure out what that impact is, then that's fine, but we didn't want to make any changes to that at this point. And we are not, even if they determine they would like to ask us to review it, and they want to, you know, fund to support that, they also understand that there's no particular obligation of us to actually, you know, go on, because it's going to be voted on the town meeting floor.
Right.
Okay. The, I looked at prior bill things, I mean, I'm trusting the fire and U.S. chief are good on that. And the others are very, yep. And then the zoning bylaws, I took a look to see if there's anything.
We don't want to do that thing that's kind of increase the maximum settlement limit.
Sorry?
I had put it in draft, and then I took it out only because you never really...
Okay, where are you?
Right after the last, prior year bill.
This one, I think.
That was where you, for the ambulance bills, in the past, you could only write up to a thousand.
Yeah, let's do that, the annual town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, we got enough to do this evening. Yeah, planning board came through and suggested that we have a moratorium through 2019, we had that, I wonder what people felt about that? That, you know, that allows...
Oh, I see, I'm looking at the tiny little writing here, is that what you mean?
What?
The little tiny writing under marijuana, marijuana moratorium, it's just a tiny...
Well, I just left it there as a note, but yeah, it is tiny.
Where is it?
Right under the green...
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
A little tiny writing.
Shrink it tiny.
Okay.
For that.
Hmm?
Can we do that without a ballot?
I believe that we can make the moratorium for up to a year, but this is going to be reviewed by council, and we can ask that, so I think the question is, do we want to go out a year, which is what planning board seems to be asking for here, and they are the ones who have the laboring ore in terms of determining, you know, location.
To the calendar year, June 30th of 2019.
Yes, I believe that that would be allowable, but we can ask.
Okay, yes.
So let's put that, let's put that 2019 date here, if that's all right with everybody.
It's a 2019 question mark. I'm fine with that, as long as planning is stacking that up.
Yeah.
Right.
So let's put June 30th, 2019, but very specifically, when we go out to have council review this, let's, let them, let us ask them whether that exceeds the allowable amount, and if it does, we will go to whatever the maximum is allowed, okay?
Okay.
Yeah. this out there, and to authorize the selectmen sitting as personnel committee to make conforming changes to the personnel bylaw.
To add this to...
To add that to what is here, right, so, so it'd be right after, the, right to the left of the quotation mark, okay?
Okay.
Before taking action relative to...
Yeah, yeah, within the, within the quotation mark, okay? Oh, sorry, after the quotation mark, but before that, okay?
The personnel bylaw?
Personal policy, sorry. Yep. Okay.
Do you ask town meeting to change the personnel bylaw?
I was thinking to ask for authorization to make conforming changes, but let's see if that's necessary. Maybe we can just do it ourselves. I thought we voted that, but it may be the bylaw that we voted, so we'll check that, okay? All right. Anything else on this?
Looks good.
Okay.
And hopefully, it's only one night.
Yeah, I mean, this...
I think, I don't, hopefully, it won't.
Yeah, generally, special town meetings go one night, but there's, you know, some of these things could engender some conversation, I suspect.
Yeah.
Okay.
And send it right away to the town council?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because we might as well get that moving. And then, next, selectmen's updates, we, obviously, we met on Saturday and went through a couple of our reviews. We did, we did decide that we would, it's pretty quick to go through the reviews that people have already made that we're just endorsing as, as a personnel committee, but given the fact that people were not operating with the new step, what we then had was a figure that showed a grade and step, but then a figure that was based upon last year's, and so therefore, we wanted to go out just to confirm to people whether they wished us to, whether they wished us to look at the dollar amount that they had recommended or the step increase that they recommended before we actually signed those off. So when we send the new step increase out, we should send, yes, we should send a note to people to say, please confirm whether, with respect to your reviews, you wish us to apply the grade and step with this or the dollar amount that they put in as a recommendation, okay?
So whether they want to stick with the size of the step increase that they were requesting, taking into account the impact, okay?
Right, because right now, we have a step increase and we have a dollar amount recommendation, and they don't match, so we're asking them which one. I suspect they will all...
That's right the downside of doing this earlier than...
That's, exactly.
Okay.
Yep, but that, I mean, those are very quick to do, and I did think...
So you held on all then?
Yes, we held all of those, yes, all of those that we were, you know, we were just approving as personnel committee. Again, you can go through those pretty quickly, but we did think, what made us think we should do that is we had some situations in which people had wanted to take two steps in order to reach a dollar amount, and yet, if you applied the new thing, you were actually above it, you know, with only one step, so we'd like, wait, we got to go back to people with that, okay?
Yep.
We, we reviewed two of the three, and unfortunately, mine is, I will have to bring it in, mine is at home, because I had anticipated I would have some time to stop at home, so the folder's on the dining room table, but...
Okay. Do you want me to hold on mine too then, or do you want me to share with you?
Hey, you could, you could just have her copy, we could look at it and approve it next week.
Okay.
And I can drop it off. And Mary, we thought that it would be nice if, if you filled one out with a self-assessment and then we could talk next week, because we obviously had an opportunity to talk at that meeting, but we thought, you know, you have some input you want to give, and the way that this is typically done in, you know, in businesses, you know, the employee puts out, then that gives you some framework, and we thought about it, and that will give us, and then my suggestion would be that we can chat about it next week.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
I think that's the report on that. And, let's see, anything else?
Did you want to, on number seven, the budget letter? That's something, in addition to that chart, that goes into the...
Yeah, I think...
Or do you want to delete it? That was another recommendation I heard.
Sorry, what?
Take it around. Delete that COLA discussion from the selectmen's and leave, and leave it for the FinCom to, or I don't know who wants to circle around on it, or not include any of that discussion, and just have the selectmen's letter be more...
Well, I have to say, at this point, because we were so efficient about getting people's stuff out there, people didn't have this input when they actually did it, so it's probably not necessary to have it in there.
Do you want to just delete that sentence?
Yeah.
And finalize it, I can give it to Jim.
Yeah. Leave the CPIU, but take out the second bullet. That's fair enough. Yeah, people can do their own math.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
Anything else that I had done? Nope.
No.
You have anything?
I went to another regionalization subcommittee meeting. I'm bringing you a draft newsletter, a second newsletter, if you want to just pass them down. I, we talked about governance as we had talked about...
Yep, yep.
And I think they are going to probably stick with that number three.
Going the way we discussed.
That we've discussed at this point, anyway. We discussed, the teachers are concerned about communication, and the attorney shared with the school committee and all of us that, you know, you have to be very careful not to get involved in the union issues, and, you know, you could just, all you can do is share the timeline and the communication that most other people are getting on their website and whatnot, but you have to be careful, as we know, not to get involved in their, the union issues.
Mm-hmm.
I think at the next meeting, they are going to bring a draft regional agreement that we will take a look at and, and just be able to, like, give input on some of the things, like the governance has sort of been decided, and most of the regional agreements are basically the same with different exceptions. Probably not too much different than, say, well, except for ours, which right now is very old, but there's certain things that have to be in every regional agreement now.
Sure.
They were, they asked the attorney about having schoolchildren disseminate these newsletters, which I guess is not a problem, because there's not a ballot question, and they can use their school emails and that kind of thing.
Okay.
I think next meeting, there will also be some kind of a finance update from Bob Conry, the finance director, and they asked us to look at these Q and As, which I brought you copies.
Okay.
These are the questions and answers that they've been working off of.
Okay.
So, I mean, you can just peruse those, and you'll have to ignore my notes, because I didn't have a clean copy.
No, it's fine. Actually. All right.
All right. And that's about it.
Okay.
I went to the MMPA Annual Labor Relations Seminar last Friday. One of the things they did was a legislative update. They seem to feel that the budget would be more conservative. They're trying not to cover the current revenue and fund everything that's out there, but there wouldn't be a lot of new money. One of the things that's coming up potentially that might affect us is a healthcare cost containment bill, so we probably want to sort of keep that in mind, because it could affect ambulance rate settings, and that would affect our revenues. Ballot questions, those could be interesting. You have fair share amendment, which is basically the millionaire's tax. They made it very clear that you cannot earmark. One of the things that's being said now is this would cover X, Y, and Z. You cannot actually earmark that money.
Yep.
In that bill. Similar, a sales tax rollback is another one that's probably going to be on the ballot, and obviously, that could have very wide impact on everyone.
Yep.
Minimum wage increase and paid family medical and maternity also. Short-term rentals like Airbnb, that legislation's been delayed.
Okay.
Because criminal justice reform sort of took over that slot.
Okay.
And that's a hot item right now. And then the, another thing that was interesting, there was a keynote speaker, and she actually worked with Homeland Security. And she just, one of the things she talked about that sort of maybe applies is to us is thinking about resiliency. There were kind of five items that she discussed, redundancy, the ability to pivot, the capacity to rebound when something's gone wrong, expect that something's going to go wrong, adequate fail safes, and admit it when you went wrong. So autopsy without blame.
Mm-hmm.
And then, just from a general level, one of the things she brought up was on a personal level, 72 on you is basically the first 72 hours if something goes wrong. There's actually a great website on there about what you want to have in your home.
Mm-hmm.
Those first two 72, first 72 hours are your responsibility.
Mm-hmm.
So you should sort of prepare. She's a good speaker.
Excellent.
She's got a book.
Excellent.
Okay.
Well, we have four cats that will crawl onto the covers. That's, that'll be good for a while. All right. I'll be attending the Town Hall meeting on Wednesday. There you have it.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay, anything else? Hearing none. I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.